Okay, Mr. Marshall. You are the co-host of this meeting. We are re- you're not the, yes, you are the co-host. We are recording. We have one attendee with us. We have a quorum of the board. Nate Malloy is with us in the house tonight. My phone says 6:34. I think we're good to go.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board Meeting of November 5th, 2025. My name is Doug Marshall and as Chair of the Amherst Planning Board. I am calling this meeting to order at 6:34 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, and further extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, this planning board meeting will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. Zoom meeting link is available on the meeting agenda, posted on the town website's calendar listing for this meeting, or go to the Planning Board webpage and click on the most recent agenda, where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event public access is disrupted for reasons of economic hardship or despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's website. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and return to mute. Bruce Colton.
I'm here.
Brad Hartwell. Jesse Major.
Present.
Hi, Doug Marshall. I'm present. Angus MacLeod.
Present.
Johanna Newman.
Present.
And I don't see Jara Smith yet. He had informed me earlier that he would be arriving around 7 o'clock. So, thank you all. We do have a quorum, so we can proceed. Board members, if technical issues arise and we need to pause, it would be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment, and I will call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item on tonight's agenda is reserved for public comment regarding items that do not appear later on tonight's agenda. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comment during general public comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting when deemed appropriate by the Planning Board Chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star 9 on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address, and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can typically express their views for up to three minutes, or at the discretion of the Planning Board Chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be discontinued from the meeting. All right, so the time is 6:37, and we'll start with our with approval of minutes. We have the minutes from July 16th in the packet. Did anyone have any comments on those minutes? Jesse.
Oh, thanks. Only one minor typo. There's one misspelling of my name under the Planning Board Committee. That's fine. Happens all the time.
Which page?
Page 7 at the bottom, under the Liaison Reports, under the motion. Mr. Major made the motion, blah, 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 and then the line right under motion. It's spelled with a M-A-J-O-R.
I am so sorry. I will fix that before posting.
No problem.
Thanks, Jesse. Anybody else have any comments? Johanna?
I was just gonna move to adopt the minutes with the amendments suggested.
Okay, thank you for that motion. Does anybody want a second? Bruce, you've raised your physical hand. Let it be known that Bruce has seconded the motion.
Okay.
All right, any further comments? Anybody? All right, we'll go ahead and vote. Bruce, we'll start with you.
Aye.
And then Fred?
Aye.
Angus?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Johanna?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. At 6:00 in favor, one member absent. Motion carries. Minutes from July 16th are approved. Thank you, Pam, for another good set of minutes.
Thank you.
So at this point, we'll go to the public comment period. We still have one member of the public, and I will read her name while she thinks about whether she wants to make a comment. Her name is Maura Keane. So, Maura, if you want to make a public comment, now's the time to raise your Zoom hand. Okay, I guess the time now is 6:40, and we will consider that we have offered a time for public comment, and no one has taken us up on that. All right, we'll go to item 3 on our agenda, the general housing discussion. Oh, by the way, Jara Smith just arrived. The time is 6:40. Jara is earlier than anticipated, but your timing is perfect. We just got finished with public comment period, and we're going right into our general housing discussion.
Excellent.
So, Nate, the first item we had on the agenda was a review of the zoning priorities list. So, and there was a set of priorities listed in the packet. Do you want to start off with that?
Yeah, thanks, everyone. I'll share my screen in a minute. I think the idea here is the staff and the Housing and Zoning Subcommittee have, you know, developed a bunch of ideas for zoning initiatives, and try to categorize them. Things that the Subcommittee could work on, staff, and then maybe others. You know, and then as we move forward, the Housing Production Plan has yet to be approved, but I think, you know, in the coming months, we could meet with the Housing Trust and the CRC and talk about some of these as well as they relate to housing. I think the goal for staff would be to get, you know, a few zoning measures ready in the spring to bring to council at one time. So, we're trying to get, you know, Rob Moore had mentioned the change to the Neighborhood Business Zone, which we'll be discussing later this month, you know, rezoning three properties on Main Street. But the town has been working on others, a few others, and, you know, from this list, I'd like to, you know, maybe set some timeframes and have the Planning Board discuss what are some of the priorities and what we think, you know, could we have three or four ready, you know, in the next six months or something? And, you know, they don't have to be, you know, some of the ones can be a simpler change. Some are more in-depth and take time. It also relates to North Amherst. You know, I think that's something that could take more time. You know, there's, you know, discussions about where else in town we could rezone, and so, you know, some of it could be, as we're looking at this property list, you know, maybe there are some targeted things we could do, and then, like we discussed last time, you know, is it changing a zoning district, so changing something from like RO to something else, or is it changing a development method or a use classification? So, you know, do we like, for instance, how the town permits and allows townhouses or apartments, and maybe we don't? You know, or do we want to allow, you know, different kinds of development methods, like, you know, cottage style in some zones? And so, you know, the list has, planning staff looked at what was done a few years ago. We updated it with a few new things, and so, you know, we haven't done this in a while. I think we have some time now with the Planning Board to look at it and, you know, keep the list going. So, you can always email me with other ideas. And I'll start sharing that in a minute. And so if that's visible for everyone, you know, there's, I just, you know, there's five items under the Subcommittee. You know, nine under staff, and then unassigned, you know, there's about, you know, there's seven. And so they sometimes, they some might relate to other ideas or initiatives staff's been looking at. So for this Subcommittee, you know, identify areas for new development. You know, I will say, you know, we've applied for a grant to look at East Amherst, possibly with a 40R or increased density or change zoning, and so we're waiting to hear, but it's something that, you know, we think that East Amherst, after we maybe look at North Amherst, is a place to focus. You know, Bruce has mentioned the open space conservation development, so that's similar to a cluster. Traditional cluster is a little, has a little different parameters, but, you know, could that be updated a little bit? A tiered approach to apartments. So right now, it's like, you know, all or nothing. You know, a maximum number in a building, multiple on a property, but, you know, in most places, it's no or site or special permit in zoning districts. Change to PRP, so we have some professional research park areas in town, and then modified mixed-use building standards and outlying village centers. So do we still want the 30%? Or something else? So those are the ones that the Subcommittee said that they could look at. You know, I'm not, I, these aren't necessarily in a ranked order. They're just numbered. And so this is, you know, we could just jump off from there.
All right, Nate, I see Bruce's hand.
Nate, just a clarification on item number two there. You say, "Look at community homes plan." Is that the Ball Lane development that you're referring to?
It is. It is, yes.
I think it might be helpful to put in parenthesis, Ball Lane, North Amherst development. And maybe use the word scheme instead of plan, because plan kind of indicates a plan.
You're saying there's no plan?
That's, that's, that's good. So that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, just to go down the list, staff items, you know, you know, there are the downtown design standards moving forward. You know, those would be complete, and hopefully in the next few months or getting to a point, and so do we, do we look at what, you know, implementing some of those through changes in the downtown? I will say that, you know, from what staff has seen, to get to what the design standards are suggesting or would like, it's, you know, there's a lot of zoning changes that would need to happen. You know, from dimensional standards to even just changing, you know, downtown zoning, whether it's overlays or, you know, changing zoning designations. The signed bylaw is something that the staff has talked about for a while. It's, you know, kind of complicated. And so that's something the staff can look at. You know, allowing multiple principal dwellings on a property. And so, this is something that, you know, in the past, the way the bylaw and a few sections references buildings, we could say, oh, well, we allow multiple single-family homes or duplexes on a property. More recent interpretation is not, that that's not allowed. And so I think that, you know, that could be something that is, you know, we could figure out how to modify. With, you know, little change to language, possible bigger impacts, what's what that actually means. Limited site plan review.
So Nate, on the principal dwellings, don't we need to decide whether we want that or not first?
Right, right. Yeah, so I'm just saying, like, to actually make that change in the bylaw isn't, you know, a big lift in terms of language, but the impacts could be. So do we, right, do we want that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I wouldn't work on it before the board had talked about whether it was something we wanted to do.
Right, and it, and it could be that we want to modify it or have some, you know, you know, allowing, say, single-family home and another type of use, or, you know, single-family home and a duplex, you know, whatever the combination might be, but right now, you know, it doesn't necessarily allow for that. Limited site plan review or administrative approval for protected uses. So, a number of communities are looking at this. So, you know, 40A Section 3, you know, has protected uses according to zoning. So like ADUs are a protected use. And then there's, you know, religious and educational and agricultural. And so actually, a fair number of Planning Board hearings are these uses. So, you know, when we looked at the Dickinson Museum is one, excuse me, for instance, the, if we look at group homes, so 20 Belcher Town Road, and then there was one further in South Amherst, the conversion of a home to a group home. You know, and maybe is, to me, there's a way to develop some thresholds where if it's some minor changes, it can be handled administratively. If it's bigger, it can go to the Planning Board. But I think, you know, essentially, you know, their uses are allowed by right. We could modify them through site plan review, but we can't really deny them because they're protected according to state law. So I think there's ways to work on those. Look at the definition of owner occupied in the bylaw. Throughout the bylaw, we used to refer to the ZBA or Planning Board or Permeating Board or Authority, so there's inconsistency. They have different meanings, but, you know, that could be a change throughout the bylaw. Cannabis is something that staff is looking at now. A 40Y zoning overlay, so that's, this is a tool the state has put forth. You know, small lots and smaller-sized homes. There's a few other requirements in there. And then, you know, another one, administrative approval thresholds for site plan review uses. And so Jesse's kind of mentioned this, and, you know, not, you know, and it might change from time to time, but, you know, could we, for instance, have some thresholds in the bylaw? You know, if it's even like minor changes in lot coverage, or even like a smaller new building that the staff would look at, and if it's beyond that, then, you know, it goes to a hearing. So for instance, you know, there's a hearing coming up, and there's a few sometimes that happen where it's like, oh, they're putting in a new building, like the shed, say, at, by Amherst Soccer, right? It's a new structure, so according to the bylaw, that needed a site plan review to put in a, you know, a shed that's small enough that it doesn't need a building permit. Do we, do we need to, you know, does the Planning Board, is that, would you be okay with that kind of project just being handled administratively? And we could write parameters into that. So what does that mean? If it's a new building, you know, we could write in things about lighting, screening, different kind of setbacks, what have you? So, you know, and some of those, to me, would be then sending really what's impactful to the board, and what we think is not as impactful is can be handled with staff. So, anyways, those are the things that staff could look at. I feel like there's three or four of these. I'd love to keep moving.
All right, we've got a couple of hands here. Fred?
Yeah, I want to give another, an example of what Nate was talking about. I can give you a real-world example in my own property where it's a three-family house, and we added a mudroom to one of the apartments. And we did so in a way that is almost invisible from outside the building. It blends so perfectly. And, but we, you know, the staff agreed that it was de minimis, but still had to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and have them agree at a business meeting that, yeah, it really was de minimis and to go ahead. And this could have easily been handled by staff.
All right. Jesse?
Thanks. I had a quick comment on the same point, and then another question. The comment is, several of the committees that I'm involved with, for UMass, that are sort of government regulatory required, have a mechanism by which the members can have a chance to look at something and decide if they think it needs to come to the full committee. And so that's a way that that could pretty quickly be implemented if we all agreed. Meaning, staff sends us all, here's the thing, here's the shed at Botline. Do you think this needs to come to full committee? If we all vote no, then it doesn't. Anyway, it's a streamlined way to sort of establish some of that. But mostly, I was really curious, and it's too tantalizing not to ask number seven, just cannabis. What does that mean for staff?
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, in our bylaw, we have a whole, you know, section for medical marijuana marijuana use. And since we've put that in place, you know, a few years ago, the regulations around it has changed. So, say whether, you know, like onsite consumption, or say, delivery, whatever, you know, all those things, we we could just update it to be compliant with the updated regulations.
Understood. Thanks.
And as for the other point you made, Jesse, I, I guess I, I would be concerned that if Nate sent something out to all of us and we were supposed to reply to and to make decisions, that we'd be subject to open, open meeting law. And that would defeat the purpose of, you know, that we couldn't do business like that outside of a meeting.
Yeah, so, you know, the Historical Commission and the, I'll just say the demolition bylaw, which is, you know, now a different one. It's a general bylaws, but there, you know, when it was updated a few years ago, they said the, you know, designate of the commission with staff. So, you know, they, it's only one person, and that's been effective. I think some of it would be with this administrative approval for site plan review uses. So it wouldn't be special permit uses. We could do it for that as well, too, but, you know, we'd want to, we'd want to make sure that it, you know, the idea would be not even to get to a Planning Board public meeting, because that means we still, the applicant would have to come to a public meeting to determine if it needs to go, then go to a hearing. And so, you know, and it could, we could have this be done incrementally, you know, so it's like, you know, is it a certain percentage increase in lot coverage that below that, you know, if it's in addition to an existing building, and it doesn't change the footprint by a certain amount, or if it's a new building under so many square feet, you know, maybe it's an accessory structure under so many square feet. So, you know, I think there's ways to categorize it. So that, yeah, I mean, you know, it's pretty clear, and then maybe we do have this designate op- option so that staff could work with a Planning Board representative to determine if it's not clear. It's already in the bylaw. If it's not clear, it goes to a hearing. So I just, you know, maybe we just come up with these thresholds and we see how it works, and we could run through a few different scenarios with, you know, staff and the Building Commissioner and others. Anyways, you know, I just, these are some ideas. Unassigned items, some of them are bigger.
Hold on, Nate. Bruce, you had your hand up at one momentarily there.
I decided that my suggestion was not a good idea.
Okay, all right.
You know, changing zoning in village centers. So, it's a bigger item, but, you know, we have a lot of different zones in town. They tried to respond to what was, you know, on the ground, you know, so we have RVC, BVC, neighborhood business, and, you know, and do we, could we simplify zoning in certain village centers? Whether it's all becomes BVC to allow for different kinds of development. The Housing Production Plan has mentioned cottage-style development. I like it, you know, that's idea of multiple dwelling units on a property, meeting some design standards and maybe whatever else. It's just a different development method than what we allow now. There could be other ones as well. It doesn't have to be cottage-style.
Bruce?
Nate, how does cottage-style development differ from 40Y? Is it essentially similar, the same, just the mechanism is? 40Y is a mechanism for cottage-style development? Does that the relationship?
Yeah, so the way, when I, when I'm thinking of cottage-style development, it's multiple units on one property. And so, you know, it would be, you know, it could be like a ground lease or condominiumized, whereas a 40Y is really, really small lots. So it's a be simple structure. So, you know, Mansfield, I have some information. They were going to Falltown meeting to adopt a 40Y. And the idea was that they had three properties that, you know, say, could be developed with maybe 10 or 12 properties, you know, large lot zoning. And they said, well, let's put a 40Y here and allow 8,000 to 12,000 square foot lots. And they're getting 80, 80 small lots on the, on these three properties instead of what would have been 12, you know, two-acre lots. And so it's, you know, it's just a different way to get, you know, they call it a starter home overlay is maybe what it a common name is. And so, you know, you're limited to how big the home is. I think you can't have any more than like 1,800 square feet and like three bedrooms. And you can, you know, I think to me, it would be, that's the difference cottage styles, you know, like planned unit residential development, which we have in the bylaw, but on a property scale, so that, you know, you could allow essentially, you know, number of single-family homes or duplexes on a property under cottage style.
Okay, I, I think I got it, but it'll come back and we'll talk more.
Senior housing, you know, I don't, you know, not sure what, you know, what that means, but site plan or view conditions. And so this is something, again, kind of going back to this administrative approval above. Could we clarify what we want in the bylaw or in the rules and regs? You know, that needs, things that need to be met in the application process. You know, staff has talked about working with the Conservation Commission to look at where, where are their developable areas in town? And so, you know, so we make all these changes. We like, oh, let's go change a village center. And then, you know, maybe a lot of it is in flood, flood plain or has wetland resources. And so, you know, maybe looking at that together with the Conservation Agent and other staff. And then, you know, this one is combine RVC and BVC, going back to the simplified village center zoning. I guess it could be, you know, different ways to do it, but one was actually, you know, condensing and collapsing our zoning districts, so reducing the number of zoning districts, which may not be the same as change zoning in village centers. But, you know, that was just an idea that's been discussed.
Hey, Bruce?
Number seven is, Doug, you might be able to answer this as well. Is the, the downtown design standards meeting the other night, we had a discussion about merging what was in Dodson Flinker's notion, something similar to this. Is this, does this bear a relationship to the conversations and the discussion and thinking at the design dan- the down, the design standards, or or is this something completely different?
I guess I would defer to Nate. I mean, we don't have RVC or BVC downtown, so I would think it would be different.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I guess for this would be, you know, there are differences in RVC and BBC in terms of, say, building height and what, say, multi-unit developments allowed. But, you know, I guess the, you know, someone would be looking at it, and, you know, is there really enough of a difference? And is it necessary to say, okay, well, you can, you know, so for instance, for instance, in East Amherst, we have some BBC, and there's some RVC right next to each other. BBC allows mixed-use buildings. RVC is more restrictive. And, you know, you know, is there, was there really a, a good rationale for having some of these zoning districts across the street from each other? You know, and it might be that there is, and so someone would be just looking at it in some areas.
Well, Nate, I mean, one way to approach that, that would be perhaps a little bit simpler, would not, would be not to eliminate both of these, but just rethink where they are. You know, I mean, we, we could change the zoning map to eliminate RVC and still leave it in the code. I mean, I mean, I'm not sure that's smart, but...
Right, or...
You know, I, I guess I'm just saying I wouldn't just automatically unilaterally combine them.
Right.
There might be three village centers where I'd say, oh, yeah, let's make those all BBC. And then there might be another two somewhere else where I'd say, okay, let's make them all RVC. And then the others can stay mixed, or, you know, I mean, I don't know.
Right, right. Or if you consider it like a, you know, a hierarchy or a spectrum of density, it's like, would, like Pomeroy, would we say, let's have all, let's make all the properties around the roundabout BBC? And maybe then, you know, the, you know, that next ring is RVC or something, right? Like,
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, right, I think there's different ways. I just, you know, these are things that have been discussed over the last, say, year between different board members and different boards and staff, and so I was just kind of getting it in writing. I think we can, you know, now talk about what do we think are some priorities. And really, it's also, you know, helping the Subcommittee, you know, do we want to prioritize some of these for the Housing and Zoning Subcommittee? You know, are there like two or three, the Planning Board is like, these sound great. And then for staff as well, like, okay, let's, you know, take a number of these and, you know, set some timeframes for getting back to the board with new information.
So that, so that the full board kind of makes, sets the priority for the Subcommittee?
Right, yep.
All right, Jesse?
I would get to some of this later, but I would vote to move the discussion you just had to the Subcommittee, meaning the RVC, BBC, and the, somehow it's combined in my mind with cottage style, cottage style potential rowhouse development, that kind of conversation to the front of our to-do list for the Subcommittee. Just a suggestion.
All right. Jesse, I'm glad you mentioned rowhouses, because... Um, when I think about trying to do denser. Housing that is affordable for a family. And, you know, I think of rowhouses as the sort of quintessential. Solution to that, you know, I mean, when you look at the worker housing of eighteen eighty. And it's. Those are prized houses now. And, uh, can we not do that anymore? You know, I just can't believe we can't figure out how to build a roadhouse anymore.
It's awesome.
I would love to see somebody say, here's some areas, you know, you'd probably. Be doing it in areas that are currently single family houses. So you're gonna engender some resistance probably. But, you know. They're so dense, they, they foster walkability, but they're. Typically, you know, before they become back bay, they're affordable. And, and they're a single family unit, so, you know, what, what's wrong with all that picture? So I'd love to see that thought about. Alright, uh, okay Jesse, you're done. Um, Jara.
Thank you, um, well Doug, I actually, I just, I wasn't planning on saying this, but I totally agree with, uh, your point about row homes. I, I'm a big fan and, and think that they promote a lot of homeownership opportunities, build community, you know, are not. Nearly as disruptive as some other housing types might be, especially in primarily residential neighborhoods, um. Uh, so I, I'm full-throated, uh, in support of, of that. I, uh, but my question, or the reason I raised my hand was Nate, I was curious if the. Development community has asked for any particular zoning reforms, like are, has anybody come to us? Had like, has Valley CDC said, like, if you had more. Um, you know, OSCD in, in town, we'd love to build more, or, you know. Some other developer said, if you. You know, combine the, the, the RVC and BBC into one zone, that would make it simpler and would make it more appealing for me to build a mixed use development. Um, or project in that area, like, have we heard from the people who are actually using the code, building these? Buildings where their. Ideas or interests are for. For rezoning?
Yeah, that's a good question, I, we've heard a little bit, um, you know. One or two developers would say, we need, you know, six stories. In all our village centers and all of downtown, so, you know. I'm not sure that's, you know, the right approach, but you know, maybe there is a way to have more density. Um, you know, that I think the mixed use buildings, all right now, you know, we. Limit the number of apartments and a number of units in an apartment building, but we don't want a mixed use building, so that's why we see mixed use buildings a lot. And so, but then we have the thirty percent. And so, you know, there's been discussions about, do we really need thirty percent in every mixed use building and every, every place it's allowed, or could we, you know. So we have heard from a number of developers saying that thirty percent say in outline village centers is. You know, really a hurdle, or that they'll build it, but, you know, they really can't fill that space. You know, I think that sometimes developers also would say, you know, they look at what they can do. And so we've had, you know, a few developers say, oh, well, maybe I'll do, you know, two smaller apartment buildings on a property. And then you could tell that they, you know, they've kind of said, well, you know, that's what I can do. But I think if they were given the option to do, you know, maybe a different kind of configuration, they would. Right, so we don't, we don't have a really nice balance of allowing. You know, larger townhouses or rowhouses, you know, in a certain way, and so we. You know, it's like, like I said, it's sometimes it's almost like all or nothing, so you're gonna do a eighty unit mixed use building, because that's what you have. But maybe some other combination could work, but we, you know, our zoning doesn't really. Offer that middle ground sometimes. Um, you know, we have inclusionary zoning, sometimes developers say that. You know, could we, you know, it's, it's a cost. Um, but I think because we offer, you know, this piece with mixed use buildings, they get a fair number of units. But, you know, maybe if we're modifying apartments, maybe we have some trade-off between affordable units and more density or something, which we have it now in our bylaw, but. Could it, could it be reworked? Um, there's one other piece you mentioned, um. Or as you're speaking, Jara, I was thinking they sometimes, um. Yeah, it's, it's hard to say exactly, you know, what, um. You know, how to change this, but. Um, you know, we don't have really prescriptive standards, and it's really hard to capture all that, and so. You know, I don't wanna say the cost of permitting in general, but, you know, if a developer comes and it's like, oh, well. You know, what really would the board look at, whether it's a zoning board or planning board? I think it's a really difficult thing to, to pin down, right, so you know, sometimes we have. We have applicants who want to try new building techniques in different looking buildings. And, you know, is the concern, you know, the users of it? Is it the actual architecture, it doesn't really matter, or whatever, but it's really, you know, our bylaw doesn't really address that sometimes head-on. Um, and I think really the student population in terms of housing market is a big one, so.
Yeah.
I think we have to figure out if we, it kind of to Doug's point. Uh, we talked about it, you know, that's why the forty Y is kind of interesting, like, is there zoning that can actually help get at an end user, and it's really difficult to do that? Zoning really doesn't get, shouldn't. I sense they shouldn't, but, you know, in Massachusetts, it's difficult to actually regulate users and occupants through zoning. But, you know, if we were like, oh sure, let's just allow six-story buildings everywhere, I think there's enough student, um. Demand that it will, you know, fill a lot of those, it won't be all of it, but, you know, is there a way to generate some other types of, um, users through zoning?
Right, great, okay, well, I'm, so the reason I ask is just because I'm trying to figure out, like, where. Where can we actually capitalize on interest and momentum, like, where? You know, where can we meet the development community where they're at to get the housing production that we need? Um, in our town, and of course, I'm not saying, like, you know, let's do whatever developers want. But just trying to meet them where they're at, see where their interests are, where they're excited about. And try and build some momentum there, so we can. Yeah, I guess that's, that's the point, that's why I brought it up, so thank you Nate.
Alright, Jara, thank you, Fred, you're next, and then Angus.
Uh, yeah, I think that this, uh, another piece of this. In terms of public policy. Uh, and this is where. Uh, I find the Ball Lane project so encouraging. Uh, I, I think that this kind of, of a construction. Pattern should, uh, basically involve condominium ownership. So that we. Move the people who, the, the families who come into these. Move them where into a situation where they're accumulating equity. Uh, that's how long-term you. You, uh, bolster the income position and the participation. Uh, in, uh, in society, so, I, I see some, uh. Public, uh, benefit to looking at that.
Alright, thank you, I think those are some of the same reasons I thought rowhouses were a good idea. Angus, you're next, and then Johanna, you can decide whether to put your hand back up or not.
Thanks, yeah, our, our, the only reason we are able to buy a house in Amherst is because we bought a rowhouse in Philadelphia. And the only reason we were able to buy a house there is because rowhouses are affordable, so. I, I agree with, with things that people are saying here. Um, I'll just say, I, I met with, um, Ron LaVertier, who owns, um, some properties in the PRP and OP. Um, uh, parks. And, uh, asked him some of the questions that, that you're, you were curious about, Jara. I didn't get a whole lot of specifics on, uh, zoning, preferred zoning changes. Um, he, uh, I mean, he said that anything that can be moved from. Uh, a special permit to site plan or view would be better, um, and, and even better would be yeses, as opposed to. Site plan review, but, which, which makes sense, um, because that drives up their costs and unpredictability, but, um. You know, hi- his feeling was, uh, so I was talking to him primarily about the PRP and OP zones. And his feeling was that, um, they're too far away generally from UMass to be useful as student housing. And so he kind of sees them, which I think maybe could, you know, could be, could be contested, but, but that's, that's how he sees it. Um, several of them are on, um, major streets with pretty good PBTA connections, um. But, uh, so he was imagining it more, trying to think about targeting like modern income housing. Um, so, uh, families who, who can't get on the kind of housing ladder because Amherst is pretty expensive. Might be able to at least live in town, but, but he was also saying that the cost of building. Um, apartments that are, say, two or three bedroom units that are big enough for a family. Hmm, push the rent up high enough that a lot of families just wouldn't be able to afford it. So he's kind of like, I'm, he, he was, you know, saying he'd like to provide more of that kind of housing, he obviously can't in the PRP or OP, because it's not zoned for that. But if we were to try and allow more housing in those spaces, that's one of the challenges that he and I think other developers would run into, in order to actually. You know, service the debt that they would need to take out to build the, the properties. Um, they'd have to charge pretty high rents, and, um. And his opinion was a lot of the student housing is able to kind of do that, because the units are so small and they pack them in so tightly. Um, and so, but families aren't as interested in that. So I, I still think it could potentially be worth looking at, at changes to PRP. Um, and, cause I, and I think those would be lighter lifts, but I'm not sure that they're gonna yield a ton. Um, as opposed to some of these other ideas of thinking more about kind of, you know, um, entry points for people into the housing ladder.
Jesse.
I guess I just wanted to say out loud something I think about all the time, and it's not unique thought for me. In our current moment, I feel like no matter what we build, it's primarily gonna be students who move in there. Unless it's somehow zoned or restricted. Unless we have a minimum distancing, a percentage, property rental, unless there's something else in place. Right now, tomorrow, whatever gets built will be rented by students, almost regardless of the shape, size, price, whatever. That's my current assessment of our town. Um, so I, I, I'm all for these other goals, absolutely. Again, that's really why I got involved planning board in the first place, but I think we have to keep that in mind. And yes, we should be thinking long-term, what do we want, but that's, that's a really important balance to me at the moment. Um, yeah, that's all.
Okay, thanks Jesse. Uh, Johanna.
I was just gonna echo the interest in rowhouses. We also had the experience of buying our first house, you know, small rowhouse in Baltimore City. Gave us the equity that when we moved to Amherst. You know, we rented for a couple of years and then were able to buy a place, because we sold the rowhouse, so, um, and. You know, we all have informal conversations around town, and I definitely hear people say, yes, we need more housing. And yes, we recognize that a lot of it is driven by students, and so we need to create that. You know, that middle section of housing, and I hear rowhouses come up a lot. So, um, I think we've talked about the area opposite the water towers at UMass at being, you know. Potential areas for that, I think East Amherst Village Center could be, there are rezoning opportunities there for rowhouses, I think that's the kind of thing we could also consider. Along some of the major thoroughfares which are in this proposal. Um, so. Just wanna nud, nudge that up, uh.
Okay, alright, thank you. Bruce.
Um, I have to say, I'm, I'm, uh, pretty much supportive of everything everybody said, which is, um. Why I've been so quiet, uh, because everybody's saying, well, we're not saying, well, I'm thinking I haven't got that far yet. But one thing that has occurred to me is the, uh, the, the, um. Uh, petitioner, uh, zoning amendments that we've seen some time ago now. Um, I'm thinking that particularly that minimum distancing suggestion, we probably should add that to the, the list, it's probably on. Uh, somewhere on the list, I mean, even if it's, uh, my guess is, but I may be wrong, my understanding, I guess, is that. That that goes to the council first, and they decide whether they want to, uh, refer it to the planning board, or is it coming directly to us?
They've been referred from council to us, they're, they're gonna be on our agenda at our next meeting.
Okay, well, in that case, the, uh, the, the proposition is that we have another couple of themes on that list of yours, Nate.
Yeah, we, we got later on the agenda, I, I could mention that, or I could mention it now, right, though, so the two citizen petitions, one is a moratorium on. Um, four plus unit, multi-unit buildings in the BGBL. Um, you know, for a year, and then the other one. Has a number of pieces to it, some, you know, some of it's minimum distancing, some of it is a student home definition. Um, and other pieces, so, that'll be heard on the nineteenth, as well as the change to the neighborhood business along Main Street. And so I think from those citizen petitions. You know, I was, right, I was thinking that the board, as part of the hearing, could say, okay, well, what are some strategies? Embedded in this, we want to add this to the list. Um, and so, yeah, you know, like I said, this list can keep, you know, we can keep adding things. You know, like I said, over the next meeting or two, it'd be great to have. You know, eve- even tonight, if there was some direction for the housing and zoning subcommittee, if there's one or two that we think are really something they could keep looking at. Um, and for staff as well to try to prioritize those. Um. Yeah, I think, um, Angus, what you said is funny, uh, just make everything a yes. I think that's what most developers would say. I don't, um. You know. Sometimes hearings can go on for a long time, so, you know, it's interesting, like a comprehensive permit, you know, it's called, you know, the forty B permits from the state, the idea is like, oh. Here we can roll, roll all these local, you know. Um, zoning and even general bylaw waivers into one permit, and it's easy. But are, you know, they do get through and they're approved typically, but. A comprehensive permit can take, you know, six, eight months of hearings with a zoning board. And you go through, you know, ten, you know, ten nights of hearings. And it's a pretty arduous process, and so what we've heard from some developers is, you know, in other communities, it doesn't take nearly that long. And do we really need to spend that much time doing it? And so. You know, that's where, say, like a forty Y or a forty R or certain overlays, essentially it's like if the town puts the work up front and says. Here, yes, we like a site, you know, like, the university drive overlay, right, is an example, where we said, okay, we'll be pretty flexible with our dimensional standards. We have some kind of general design standards. And it's a site plan or view use, you know, we spent the time doing it so that if a developer comes. They know that if they, you know, meet what we've put out there in terms of our mixed use standard and have some variation in the facade and. Keep it along the streetscape and have the multi-use path. You know, it's a site plan or view use, and that, you know, they'll get there pretty quickly, whereas if we. You know, didn't have it that way, and maybe they could still do it through our zoning, but they needed a special permit to increase the floor, to get the extra height, and. They needed to get a waiver or two from our bylaw for these things. You know, that's a lot more work on a developer's, from a developer's point of view, um, and so. You know. I think we do, but we want to make sure that we have, you know, we, we can't capture everything, right, we can't anticipate all, what, what might, might come, so. Even on new drive, right, someone could come in and propose something like, oh geez, maybe that's not exactly what we thought, but. So it's really hard to allow to be that gracious and say, sure, let's just make everything site plan or view, I don't know if that's the right approach either, but. Maybe where we do want it, like maybe the PRP, right, or these other areas in town we're looking at, we're saying, okay. To me, zoning provides an opportunity, it may or may not happen, so like North Amherst overlay. Whether or not that would be utilized right away, it could just be another opportunity if, you know, a, a developer or partner wants to come in and work with one of the owners. Um, and so the PRP, right, is one where it's like, okay. Ron, I'm not sure we're gonna say yes, and you can just go build, you know. Big buildings with a building permit, but maybe there is a, a way to have some site plan or view uses. Um, that, you know, make it better than, you know, right now it's not allowed, or, you know, a special permit, so.
Alright, um, Jesse.
Thanks, um, I was gonna save this, I think for later, but most of these. Pieces of this, what I'm gonna say, have already come up, so I thought, I'll just throw it out there, and it's sort of halfway between this, yes, yes to everything. And. Several degrees above, I think the approaches we're currently taking, and, because over the weekend I started jotting down ideas about a more sweeping. I don't know if it's gonna be zoning or overlay, whatever, but I was looking at our map of identified areas, right, that, that we used the other day. And then I was thinking also about some of the comments about, like Johanna just mentioned, and then the petition about the, our major thoroughfares, and like. Couldn't we develop? For all of those spaces. A single change to allow cottage style rowhousing, whatever, increased density, as we're defining it, not necessarily six stories, but. To get three or four X density on single lots. All in one move, right, and is that maybe a simpler way to think about this? Uh, and obviously we have to think about what the consequences are, obviously have to go to. Get lots of input, but. That's where my head's at with a lot of these issues that we're discussing right now at the moment, and partly because of what happened last week at the North Amherst. Meeting, but again, we'll get to that later. Right now at the moment, and partly because of what happened last week at the North Amherst meeting, but again, we'll get to that later. Um, so I'd be happy to, maybe the Subcommittee or whatever, that's definitely on my mind to think in in that way. And again, I don't know if an overlay makes sense or if it's merging some of the zoning, that that I need. Staff and others more knowledgeable they need to to think through.
Alright, I confess that the uh, phrase that went through my head as you described that was. We could irritate a whole lot of people all at once.
Yep, is that, maybe that's better than different pockets at one at a time, right? I don't know.
Alright, uh, Angus.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I I I think what Jesse is proposing is a great idea and a great idea for the Subcommittee to look at, and I think it combines. Several of the ideas that we're that we're thinking about on that list. Um, and and I mean, for instance, like a bunch of those areas that we've identified because they're. Kind of major intersections of major thoroughfares are already zoned BBC and RVC. So I I think there's a way we could think about it, maybe not as an overlay, but just as a rezoning. Um, for for like four different areas across town. And so that would be both maybe some, you know, changes to whatever that zone is that we want to call it. Maybe it's. BRVC, I don't know, but um, and then also. Um, changing some of the contours so that, for instance. Puffton Village and some of the places we're thinking of in North Amherst are reclassified, are rezoned, I mean. Into this new idea, or it could be just that we do the overlay across, you know, four or five different sites. Um, I think there's different ways to do it, but I I think that's a a good idea.
Um, since I don't see any hands, I'll just mention two things that. I think are related to some of the topics we've touched on here. One is uh, that row houses typically depend on a back alley. That is parallel to the frontage to for vehicular access. And we don't have a lot of rectilinear street grids to enable that. So I think, uh, you know, we'd need a mechanism to if to to. To create that. And then the second thing is, um, one of this, one of the dilemmas of our master plan. Is that we say we want to build up our village centers. But at the same time, we're very attached to the existing buildings in our village centers. And so how do we build up something that's already built out? Um, I almost feel like we should have identified three or four other village centers that are completely empty at the moment. Um, that we could have built, you know, built up from from nothing. Um, so, you know, the historic preservation versus, you know. Upzoning and replacing is just a a uh, a tension that seems. Built in and I'm, I, you know, I haven't figured out how we do that, but it's always a dilemma and. Are we really attached to what we have or are we ready to replace it with something larger and more modern? Alright, so I don't, uh, Nate, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll share my screen again with the list. Yeah, I think, Doug, to your point, it's interesting, you know, when. When the board talked about those areas around town, you know, and you end up looking at the map. There's really not, you know, there's still so much of the town that isn't included. And so it's kind of interesting. It's like, well. You know, are 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 we willing to, right? Allow new streets and the conversion of these areas to something different entirely to allow for new growth. While, you know, while keeping some other areas unchanged, or do we want to have, you know, something more gradual and I. You know, for instance, like we don't, we don't see a lot of nice new neighborhoods being developed, right? There's like, you know. Some cul-de-sacs and then these big apartment buildings or mixed use buildings. And it's like, is there just a different way? To have development happen and, you know, I think it's it's hard given how, you know, the town is already developed and there's already these layouts and so. You know, to me, like the forty Y, for instance, would be if we wanted to do this, you know, I'd want to change our subdivision regulations to allow really narrow streets. You know, no, we don't need the forty foot wide right of way and, you know. Twelve foot lanes or fifteen foot lanes and shoulders, we, I'd want to go down to like, you know, an eighteen foot wide road. And you know, you know, maybe only one sidewalk. And so you get these seven thousand, five thousand square foot lots. And you can start creating, you know, some density that way as opposed, you know, it's a different density than, say, a big building, but maybe that's. Way to look at it. Um, so like, uh, you know, in in Mansfield, if this is visible. Here's their, what was the proposed forty Y, so you can see, um, you know. Here's what the lots are normally this big and here's their forty Y, you know, their seven thousand square foot lots. And so they have eighty lots here. Um, you know, with some open space still around them, but otherwise, you know, it would be, you know. You know, one, here's one lot normally typically allowed. And so, you know, they're like, you know, you can get seven of the forty Y lots and one of their house lots, right? So they're.
So what kind of building lot coverage is allowable on these tiny little parcels? Can you do party walls and, you know, zero setback on the sidewall side?
Yeah, you might be able to. And so what they were envisioning, if you don't mind the scrolling, was this kind of, you know, just small, single families, and I think they had some duplexes, so. But that was the idea is to have, you know, really small lots and a different kind of density. Um.
And how does the fire department feel about this kind of thing?
You know, we haven't approached them yet. Uh, you know, this is, um, you know, Mansfield, like I said, was going to town, fall town meeting to get this adopted. So, you know, they must have worked out that, you know, you know, they had some, you know, also they have septic and other things, but. You know, they, I, you know, obviously it would work. I think, you know, the fire department likes. You know, a certain width, at least stabilized sides. I mean, this is still a two lane road, so it's wide enough. You just have to make sure that the, you know. They can make all the turns and curves, but.
Okay, alright. Cause a lot of the, you know, a lot of the sort of historic beacon hill type sorts of neighborhoods. You know, you could never even lay that out to meet the fire department requirements now. And um, so that's always felt like a constraint that would be pretty difficult to get over. Um, you know, without a lot of. Reassuring or some, you know, some way to get around some of the current fire codes.
Right. I mean, so, yeah, you know, the Civic Academy occurred last Wednesday, so I wasn't able to attend the North Amherst meeting. So, you know, we. You know, there's, you know, twenty five students that have, um, enrolled in this class, you know, a number of communities are doing it around the state. Where they learn about different parts of municipal government, whether it's different departments, the budgeting, and so last week it was, you know, planning, conservation. Uh, inspection services and sustainability. And, you know, I said, right, so Amherst has had zoning in place for a hundred years. But, you know, a lot of the nice neighborhoods people like in a lot of communities, it was built before zoning and it probably couldn't be built now. And so, you know, we got zoning in place in nineteen twenty seven. We did, you know, kind of an overhaul in the fifties. We did it in the seventies after UMass expanded and really the zoning has been kind of stagnant for like fifty years. And so, you know, some of, a lot of our zoning is still reminiscent of what, you know, the nineteen seventy three big update. And so. It's like, well, you know, maybe now people are saying, well, yeah, zoning can be exclusionary, or maybe it didn't get to where we wanted it to go, or wow, we're actually losing. You know, the demographics we thought we we wanted because, and maybe we didn't really know why for a long time, but now we're saying maybe it is some of the land use, so. I think it's really difficult though, because we have all these development patterns and how do we create, say, new neighborhoods and. They're really big questions, I, you know, it's kind of the exciting part. Um, we have time to talk about it. So, you know. Maybe Jesse, the Housing and Zoning Subcommittee does look at like row houses and do we make some changes or rec- you know, start that conversation. Um, I'm gonna share the list just so maybe we identify one or two to keep working on as priorities, um. And I've I've added some at the end here, row houses, minimum distance and other road, you know, density along certain roads and rights of ways.
Probably should put student homes in quotation marks.
Uh huh, okay. Uh, Fred, I think you're next.
Yeah, a couple of things, um. One thing, Nate, is that, um, I I'll take issue with you, I. Uh, as you know, I did an analysis of North Whitney Street, uh, which. Uh, Walker, uh, shared with the planning board. Um. Every single parcel on North Whitney Street from Main Street up to Clifton Avenue, and I think. Almost, in fact, I think every single parcel all the way out to Red Gate Lane. Fully complies with the current bylaw. Uh, and so I, and uh, if you look at, uh. Uh, Lincoln Avenue and Farring Street and so forth. Uh, most of those properties comply with the current bylaw. I will also tell you that in my first two terms on the planning board at the end of the nineties. One of the things I prided myself on was, uh, I can't think of a single zoning change that would. Made it through town meeting that, uh, created non-conformities. Uh, that's something that I looked at very carefully when I was, uh, on the planning board to the last. Couple of times that I've been on the board. So I I think this is a smaller problem than you think. I will also say. In regard to the uh, the Amherst base map that you circulated, I think that's very useful. And there are a number of, uh, sections on that that, uh. Are, uh, amenable to the kind of, uh. Uh, infill that we've been talking about here, uh. Uh, if, you know, there, they've been developed and we'd have to do something that is. That would a- a- attract the interest of current ownership, but that's true no matter where. Um, so, uh, that. And none of the, no, no development I can think of in those areas. Uh, threatens, uh, the, uh, general, uh. St- standards to the extent they exist in the current bylaw. Uh, I I don't think anything there, uh, threatens that, so, uh, I I think it's possible.
Alright, thank you, Fred. Bruce?
Um, Doug, I I was thinking about your comments about the Mansfield example that, uh. Uh, Nate showed us. I think that in town and probably in Mansfield and other towns as well. The, uh, the building, provisions of the building code could be used to assuage the concerns of fire departments. I think most specifically. Um, uh, requiring these buildings to have a thirteen D fire suppression system in them. Which certainly adds a cost to the buildings, but I think it should be outweighed by the, uh. And by the, um, offsetting of the smaller lots and the smaller land costs and the, and and the other benefits that come with this. Mechanism for increasing, significantly increasing density. So I I would be a little more optimistic. Uh, that, uh, that we could satisfy, uh, the various interests, um, and. And conservative forces and so forth in in our town on that regard.
Alright, thank you. Sorry, sorry for coming across as pessimistic, Bruce. I was just, uh.
No, not at all.
I just wondered how, 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 how fire departments feel about that kind of layout.
Yeah, no, I I think it's a, not pessimistic at all, it's quite realistic, uh, as is the width of the streets and various other things. All of those are going to encounter quizzical reactions from these organizations, but I think we can help them. Assuage their concerns and so forth, uh, responsibly by, um, perhaps these other, uh. Regulatory, uh, devices that exist.
Great, uh, Angus.
Uh, thanks. So Je- Jesse, it sounded like you were suggesting that we should, um. Try to prioritize like two or three of these for the next, um, Housing and Zoning Subcommittee meeting?
You're addressing that to Nate, right?
Uh, no, to Jesse.
Oh, okay. I think Nate felt that way too.
So, good. Sorry, go ahead, Jesse.
I was gonna say, yes.
Okay.
Thoughts, but we can talk about that later.
Yeah, so I I was just gonna suggest maybe, I mean, it seems like there's a lot of energy around the idea of, um. Both the, um, this one A, you know, density on the main corridors. And that I think that that we could put under that as well. Um, the RVC, BBC, uh, possibly. Um, sorry. Mixed use building standard and outline village centers, all the things that are kind of the same set of, you know, considerations. Um, poss- I think there was something on the ones you added at the bottom as well, Nate. Um, but all of those. Row house density along certain roads and right of ways. All all of those could be one, like a a top order thing for us in the Housing and Zoning Subcommittee.
Okay, alright, um. Go ahead, Jesse, uh, then I'll make one comment.
Thanks. I would also suggest maybe we could split our time into two buckets. One is exactly what you just said. And the other maybe is working on identifying forty Y areas. Because I'm thinking about how we're presenting to the larger town. And I feel like that's a really nice parallel to work on, meaning, yes, we're looking at higher density, which we expect to be students. And we're looking at starter homes because everybody agrees that's sorely missing from our town.
Great. Uh, I was just gonna say, um. Most of you were not on the board back when a couple of town councillors. Had proposed that we allow, that we eliminate single family houses all the way through town and. And allowed, uh, two homes on, two primary homes on any parcel. Um, and I I just remembered that. Uh, the board did not recommend that, but during that conversation, I certainly, or I I had felt like. I would like to see more, more development along our. Uh, main corridors. And then less develop as you move, less development as you move away from that. So that rather than a blanket solution that covered the entire town. That we, uh, concentrate development along some of the main roads. And let the rest of the town remain more rural or undeveloped or, you know, New Englandy. Uh, as a, as a preferable development pattern. Bruce, you're you're next.
Um, Doug, I agree, uh, that, uh, that when Mandy Jo and Pat proposed that, uh. That, but that was, that was a part of a much larger suite of changes. Um, and it was, I I think, I remember being, uh, in favor of some. Uh, neutral on some and and, uh, uninterested or or not in favor of others. And then, of course, the. The whole discussion, every time we had it, there was changes. So I think that, that, um. You're right, we we did, uh, decide not to endorse that proposition, but I think it's. Probably not accurate to, um, say that that did, that doesn't mean that there weren't some things in there that some of us. Mightn't have, uh, been quite supportive of. And the example that you mentioned is one that I was more in favor of than some of the others.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for that clarification or, uh, what. Yeah, I I probably did oversimplify the the proposal. Angus.
Um, so I guess I'm wondering if we should, I I think those those two things seem like that could be a fair amount of work for the Housing and Zoning Subcommittee. Um, those two buckets of things. I guess I'm wondering if there is, uh, if we should prioritize things. For to help with the staff, um. Uh, Nate, I don't know if the staff has any thoughts on their, what they would ideally like to prioritize, but it seems like it's. Probably incumbent upon us to also help think with y'all about what should be prioritized in that list.
All of them? No, um, you know, it's interesting, the. Um, you know, it's like the administrative approval, uh, for protected uses or for site point review uses. I like that. Just because that could give the board time to do, you know, have discussions like we're having now. Um, at the same time, if we're looking at changing, um. You know, standards or or development, you know, like a tiered approach to apartments. And, you know, owner occupancy or multiple dwellings on our property all kind of work together. And so, you know, kind of looking at that, I think. So, uh, you know, um, for Angus and Jara, right, so two councillors a few years ago said, oh, let's. Change how we permit, you know, single family homes, duplexes, added triplexes. I don't know if they had a quad, you know, like a fourplex, but then. I don't know if they had a quad, you know, like a fourplex, but then converted dwelling and subdivisible dwelling. And they basically took like, you know, almost everything that was a special permit, made a site plan review, made a lot just yeses. And so, you know, it looked somewhat straightforward. Oh, let's just make these changes, these kind of um, you know, just, you know, we're not, they're not gonna change definitions very much. They added just the triplex, but you know, let's just change how we permit them. But you know, it, there was, there was a lot to consider and what, how did it actually work? But it did, you know, the idea was, okay, do we really need to have, you know, why do we have all duplexes by special? Most duplexes are special permit, right? Or we can't really get a good three unit product on a residential property because it's considered an apartment or a zoning bylaw. Maybe it's a townhouse, but again, that's special permit in a lot of areas. It's not allowed. And so, you know, I think when I think of like tiered approach to apartments, it'd be like, okay, you know, is there like a three to ten unit apartment building that's a site plan review use in areas? So, you know, maybe there's some other limitations on it. But that way, you know, it's not like, oh, I can't do it anywhere except for these few zones. And, and oh, and if I want to do it in a residential setting, it's a special permit. Um, so you know, try to get to like a site plan review allowance for that. Yeah. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know if there's any, if people have ideas. Um, I think forty Y is interesting. I think that can be a con- you know, conversation between the Housing and Zoning Subcommittee and staff, uh, other staffs looking at it. So, you know, some communities would take, you know, if they have large municipal properties, could they just do like an overlay of, you know, if they're not contiguous, right? But say, okay, here's a bunch of forty Y areas. The town doesn't really have, you know, kind of those holdings, right? It's not like we have, you know, just enough acreage, but I think a forty Y is an interesting um, idea. Anyway, so I, you know, those are the ones I had said, right? A few, um, you know, like four, eight, six, and you know, nine and ten. So there's a few there. I don't know if there's others or planning board members have ideas.
Not seeing any hands. Jared?
Um, well, I just, I'll, I'll reiterate my interest in, well, maybe state for the first time, the forty Y zone uh, does sound very interesting. I love Jesse's idea of that kind of being a dual track where we're looking at places for multifamily rentals, but we're also figuring out how to support starter homes, which is something that I think we're all very passionate about. And we hear time and time again, it's really difficult for people to find in Amherst. Um, uh, I uh, I'm curious, Nate, do you, do you, just like from a, when I'm thinking about these, these modifications, right? I'm thinking about them in terms of the, the technical revisions that need to be made, like to the code or whatever the case may be, but then there's also the, of course, the political side of it. Um, what's, what's realistic to get passed and all that, but I would, I'd like to take the political side apart for a second. And I'm curious, from your perspective, do any of the staff items or even any of the housing subcommittee items have a relatively low lift as far as like the technical changes that would need to be made? I'm trying to think of like, what is, what is the best, like biggest bang for our buck? Um, and so if there's anything in here that would be like simple, politics aside, I'd be curious to hear your, your expertise and thoughts on that.
Um, you know, I don't, yeah, you know, so um,
That's not an easy question.
Yeah. So not, not necessarily, you know, so for instance, like right now, if we said, well, we want more multi-unit buildings and village centers, we could look at the zoning there and say, well, we don't really do it great with RVC. Let's just make apartment site plan review and RVC. That seems like an easy fix, but maybe there's, that's not, you know, maybe there's some unintended consequences or impacts there that were, you know, maybe the lot sizes aren't really big enough. So what you really, so you don't really get, you know, maybe you actually don't really, maybe it's not even useful because of the way the properties that are there. So I, yeah, I mean, it's, I, I, I kind of, you know, I know what you're asking. I don't really, you know, for instance, allowing multiple dwellings on a property, like I said, that could be a really simple language fix.
Right.
We'll, you know,
But.
Section three point oh one. And then does that just change everything? Because now, you know, you could do three duplexes on a property as long as you meet the dimensional standards and lot coverages. Is that a bad thing? I, you know, I mean,
Yeah. Right.
Um, so, you know, I think Fred, I was gonna say, you know, Fred, it said, well, you know, some of these older pro- um, air uh, neighborhoods comply with zoning. I think some of it was the way they were permitted, but say, say today to build a three unit building like Fred lives in, that might be considered an apartment. And maybe that wouldn't be allowed, but the way it was built as a, say, converted dwelling or subdivitable dwelling, it was. Or you have a duplex and you know, it's there and you could say, oh yeah, duplexes are allowed, but you know, it's a special permit if it's not owner occupied. And so to get to, to say, okay, let's have this kind of variation or this kind of development. Right now, I don't think we make it easy to have some of these neighborhoods or like those homes on Lincoln are really big. And you know, some of them could support a four unit building or four units in that building in the structure. But to do that right now, we could say, oh, well, they could convert it or they could do something. But if you were to build it fresh and new, we would say, well, that's, you know, that's an apartment building or a townhouse and those are special permits or actually in some zones, it's not allowed. So, you know, to me, that's where I'm thinking, okay, well, if we want to have kind of this, you know, kind of different, you know, um, kind of a spectrum of density in different neighborhoods, how do we approach it? And that's kind of like this tiered approach to apartments and we could even say townhouses. Um, you know, and it's just an exploration, right? Of like, what does it mean? So we do have an additional lot area per family um, that gets to a certain density, uh, you know, and, and, but sometimes then we, we have all these different residential use classifications and they have different permitting. And so sometimes I think like, if we think six units an acre is good, then let's just say that. And I don't care whether it's an apartment or a townhouse, that's just a site plan review use. But, and the way our zoning bylaw works is we categorize them differently, have different standards for all those different uses. And then we don't, you know, so then it doesn't quite, we don't quite get there. Um, so, you know, I'm not, you know, I think some of these I'll continue looking at. I do like, say, the limited site plan review for protected uses. Communities are starting to ask more about that. And like I said, I think it'll free up a lot of planning board time, right? So if we don't have to spend a public hearing talking about something that's um, allowed by right, that we could maybe modify a bit.
I mean, your number six there looks like just some text changes.
It does. I think that, you know, it's interesting, in the past, uh, we define that the permit, um, the ZBA is the special permit uh, granting board that the planning board can be. And then we have this permit granting authority, which also allows for administrative approval. So that, you know, if it is not, if it doesn't, you know, trigger a full site plan, then staff could, could make those changes. In previous, some other members in different boards and different iterations of, you know, legislative bodies were like, we don't want to, we're not sure we want to give that administrative ability to staff. Uh, and so that's kind of where this stalled making a bigger change. But I think it is something to look at. So like I mentioned, like the, you know, um, sometimes even parking. So change, Article seven, so if there's like minor changes to parking, right now, there's no administrative approval review there. And it just always, uh, it will get kicked to a board for a public hearing and it can be a really small change. And so I agree. I think that's a really easy technical fix. We can go through and figure out where we want to make those changes. Um, and it could, you know, in the end, it could actually be meaningful because now there is an administrative approval process for a bunch of things where there wasn't before.
Yeah. Uh, Fred's got his hand up.
Uh, yeah, um, Nate, I absolutely would agree that, and I think this is a comparatively minor change and it's low hanging fruit. And that is um, remove, removing the conflation of the term apartment with uh, an apartment that is part of a uh, certainly a two, and I would think also three, maybe four family dwelling. Um, you know, I, I don't think that's an apartment complex and uh, the uh, uh, existing uh, bylaw in terms of the uh, area, the minimum area table in terms of the uh, uh, lot area, I think sufficiently regulates the overall density. So I think that is low hanging fruit and we could go after that fairly easily.
All right. So Nate, if I have a single family home and I build an attached ADU on that, have I turned my single family home into a duplex or is it still a single family home?
I mean, I think there's two answers there.
I, I just feel like, well, you know, okay, we've got single family, we've got duplex, we've got triplex and quads. But then what happens with ADUs? You know, it's just like, it's not even that simple anymore.
Right. Yeah. No, I think realistically, um, you know, with the protected ADU, you know, you're now allowed, you know, two units on, on most residential properties.
Yeah.
You know, whether, you know, say if it's a single family home, you could have two units. So I don't want to say it makes the duplex thing irrelevant, but um, you know, there are some differences, but.
Yeah. All right. Um, we're coming up on eight o'clock when we usually take a break. Um, Nate, have you gotten what you need from this conversation? Do you think there's a little bit of direction for the Housing Subcommittee?
Yeah, I think, you know, I piloted it and I think, you know, from the conversation, it's, you know, maybe like a, you know, like a um, you know, two approaches and investigations and assessments. And I think we can go from there. It doesn't, you know, you know, I think we can try to, the Housing Subcommittee was trying to meet more frequently, Housing and Zoning Subcommittee. The staff can start looking at some of these as well. You know, I think would just be, you know, we can try to say, we'll report back, you know, at least at every other planning board meeting and try to get some, you know, we can always send the board, you know, staff in the Housing and Zoning Subcommittee can also send the board, you know, things and we can share them back with staff to make edits. So if, for instance, you know, I was gonna have, you know, look at some of this and get together a document and have, you know, we can always share that with you before a meeting. Um, so yeah, I think there's things to keep looking at.
All right. Great. Bruce?
One last thing. Nate, before you bring this to the Subcommittee and then, and, and any further, uh, I would really like this to be written out in proper English. Um, so that it's, we know actually what these mean because many of these uh, are not even complete sentences. They're uh, they're, 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 they're shorthand for something that you understand. Um, but I think we should, you should take the trouble to expand this a little bit so that it's clear to everybody what we're talking about. And also in the conversations we've had tonight, try and connect and, and, and concatenate uh, some of these so that we have fewer um, items uh, that are the uh, fewer items that can reorganize it so that it, it um, is a better list uh, that we can all understand. Cause at the moment, it's, 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 it's become too much of a dog's breakfast, I think. I know that we, and we, tonight and so forth, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna know what this means next week. So I implore you to uh, put it together in a, in a, in a, in a, in a, in a more organized, uh, condensed form. That would be helpful.
Thank you, Bruce. All right. So it's uh, almost eight o'clock. Why don't we take a five minute break and we can come back and talk about uh, North Amherst and our overlay district that we've been talking about. I have seven fifty-seven, so maybe just uh, what's that, three, three minutes, two minutes after eight, come back? Thanks. Thanks. All right, we've got everybody but Fred. Pam, you are not muted.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we are back. All right, next on the agenda was to talk about the overlay that we've been uh, thinking about in North Amherst. Bruce and I and Jesse were at the community meeting last week with District One. With Kathy Shane and um. They, it was well attended, there were probably, what, forty, forty-five people there? Um, we filled that community room at the new.
I counted thirty-five, I think.
Is that right? Okay.
Just a minute, let me, I wrote it down on one of my cards.
Okay.
Thirty.
Thirty people.
Thirty, not counting the four of us.
Okay. You know, I, I think, I don't know how you guys felt, I didn't feel like we got uh, a lot of new comments. That we wouldn't have anticipated. Um, you know, as I'm, I think I, I was, we had one guy who was, was saying that the traffic up there on Meadow Street is already just. Absolutely terrible. Um, I know Bruce, you've said that you're not quite as convinced of that, so. You know, I, not my, not my issue to decide, but uh. You know, I think everybody appreciated has coming and having the conversation. And Jesse and Bruce, anything you want to add?
Yes, I'll agree. It was um. Uh, it was well moderated, uh, um, Kathy queued people so that people. Weren't constantly trying to get the attention of the facilitator, they would therefore sit and listen, waiting their turn, knowing that they were. Two or three down the line. Um, uh, it was quite uh, an interesting turnout. I mean, we had the two. People, two of those thirty were people from the Black Walnut Inn. Another was uh, at least one was one of the property owners on uh, North Pleasant Street. Um, there were, Jill Breivik was there, who I think has been elected to the council, along with Kathy now. Um, and uh, there were uh, the two owners of. Puff, uh, two of the, at least two of the consortium or the ownership structure of Puffton Village. Um, and probably, so there were, there were people like that that were there, so this, this was not a crowd that were coming there to. Um, disrupt, this was a crowd that was interested. Uh, and had uh, had serious interests uh, at stake and 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 they also said things, the, the. One of the two owners uh, made three, two or three comments, I think, it's, it's very. Common for owners and developers to attend these meetings, but to say something is uh. Um, not always common, and so it was successful from all of those kind of reasons, I think. Um, Doug's right, there wasn't a lot of new information, but the strength of which some of it was expressed was new, in particular, and it was. Pine Street Doug that he was saying that was backed up all the way to the eastern end of.
Okay.
Uh, Simple Gifts Farm and, and I see that, that backup end out of my kitchen window and. Maybe it's, if it happens before I get up at uh, seven thirty in the morning or eight, then maybe, but that's the only opportunity that it would happen. Where I wouldn't be able to see it, so I think it's, I, I don't understand that kind of nonsense that some people. These days seem to think that they can state without any uh, evidential basis for it, it's uh. Um, so I think we have to be careful to not dignify some of that stuff with uh. Uh, that hasn't been properly researched, it's um, it's, it's just a volcanic outbursts and so forth. There wasn't much of that, that was probably the singular. Um, outrageous example, um, rest of it was pretty level. And uh, and Kathy Shane and others made the case, their point that. New housing costs more to rent than existing housing. And we, uh, he and I had both independently done research on this matter and she found that it was quite a big increment. Than I had found, but we both found the same thing, that somewhere between thirty or more percent of the uh. Uh, the, the new stuff is thirty or forty percent more uh, in rental rates than. So that, that's a concern because the argument is, we've already got affordable uh, rental housing there, uh, we're gonna lose that if we redevelop. Those three hundred plus units in Puffton, so those are the kind of things, but it was, it was basically a. Um, oh, the other thing that's worth saying is uh, that um, people um, were very appreciative that. In their experience, the first time in their memory, that uh, that this kind of uh. Um, an event had been uh, initiated, conducted uh, so early in a process. That was, that was noted and uh, and favorably commented upon. I think that's enough for me.
All right, Bruce, um, Jesse?
Thanks, a few quick takeaways from me, um, I largely agree, I'll try not to be too redundant. Um, the big takeaways I have are what Bruce finished on, how appreciated it was that we were there having the conversation. So I think as we approach these other changes, we should do that as often as makes sense. Um, two, that maybe not surprisingly, there's a lot of. Misunderstanding of who does what, meaning we were there as planning board, a lot of the conversation was about infrastructure. Which we can't really address directly, obviously we need to interface. So somehow, I think moving forward, and particularly with this North Amherst idea, I think we, even though it's very premature. We need to be careful about presenting an idea without having some of that knowledge or some of that discussion already in hand. Conversations about sewer, fire, police, traffic, all that stuff, which isn't stuff we really deal with, but. When we're gonna go to this kind of meeting, we either need to say very clearly upfront, we're not gonna talk about these things because it's not our purview. Or we need to say, you know, yes, we've had some limited conversations, just to help things along. Um, I agree, there was not too much new that we weren't expecting, it was limited, there was not a lot of heated anger. A little tiny little bit here and there, uh, but I thought it was quite productive, honestly. Um, but my main takeaway for us moving forward with this idea, I still think it is. Probably the lowest hanging fruit and could have the biggest impact. But I do think it might be time to think through some of the infrastructure issues and whether this is realistic at all to accomplish. Um, and that's, I think we really need direction from staff about that. Uh, and I am thinking about traffic, I, I know it's an issue, I don't know how much of an issue, Bruce, you know more than I do, but if we are adding. X hundreds of individuals with that many cars potentially. I think we need to have that well, very well considered, and I know we've, we've played with a few ideas about new roads and new. Traffic patterns, whatever, but I think that might need to take more. A, a, a more important presence in anything that moves forward with this area. Uh, because I think without that, there's, I, I see very little chance it would get very far outside of this crowd right here. I have some ideas, but we can talk later, but yeah, that was my big takeaway from the meeting. I thought it was a great idea and we should keep doing things like that.
Okay, great, thanks Jesse. Um, I see Fred and then Jera, but before we go there, Nate, um, the question about. DPW and traffic and infrastructure, is that? You know, should we ask, I don't know, Guilford or? Uh, you know, some, the, should we, should we meet with the, what, what is it, the Transportation Advisory Board or, you know, how do we? What would be appropriate for us to do as opposed to doing nothing and just starting at the meetings and saying, we're not gonna talk about that?
Uh, Doug, can I get in be, on this because this is exactly what I was gonna discuss?
Okay, all right.
Yeah, um, Nate, uh. The uh, the mention of Meadow Street, that um. Rang a bell with me because as I think a, a lot of you know, I uh. Retired as the uh, Division Director, the Electrical Division Director uh. In the Department of Public Works. And one of the things that I did was, for example, program intersection, like, you know, traffic lights at intersections. And one of the things that I know, this is. The potential design was put together be, just before I left. And retired from that position, but um. A very well-developed redesign of the Meadow Street, Pine Street, North Pleasant Street intersection. That, the, and the traffic lights that, that are there. I have seen that redesign, it, 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 there's, a lot of engineering has, has, has been done. And I sort of thought when I left, which was, I think, two thousand and one. That uh, sometime in the not-too-distant future, that. That intersection was gonna be rebuilt and obviously it has not been, and so Doug, you're, you're spot on. Uh, I think we need a discussion with, with Guilford about. Because if you, if, if you rebuild that intersection, you're gonna solve a lot of the traffic problems.
All right, thank you Fred. Jared, why don't you go ahead and then we'll let Nate have a word?
Okay, I'll just say one thing quickly, um, uh, because you all have already answered my questions that I had for. The event for the most part, but um, I appreciate the concern about losing the three hundred existing. Naturally occurring affordable rental properties, but I do wanna remind uh, or state for the record that. Presuming there is significant density increase, those buildings would also be covered by inclusionary zoning requirements and we could very easily. Make up the difference in theory, but I'll, I'll start there.
All right, and uh, Jesse, I see you.
Yeah, sorry, just clarifying.
Comment in response to that.
Yeah, sorry, just clarifying from the meeting, there was, I meant to say this, there's clearly a lot of confusion about using that word affordable housing also. Right? The main sentiment was not actually about affordable units, it was that these rentals are lower than other rentals. So it's, it's very different and, and again, whenever we talk outside, we need to be very clear about what we're talking about, that's all.
Okay. All right, Nate?
Yeah, you know, when we, you know, I think it's difficult to. Um, reach out to, you know, say, please fire Public Works and say, we have this idea, you know, can we do a full analysis of the, you know, infrastructure? Um, but I, you know, I did reach out to them, you know, police had said, you know, this is a while ago when we first talked about this, police said, yeah, I think. You wanna make sure that it's, you know, you wanna have site design in a way that you could discourage large gatherings, right? Um, but they didn't say no, they were just, you know, it was just like a simple two-line email saying, you know, it could probably be managed. You know, Guilford said water and sewer, you know, said water is fine, sewer, the main on North Pleasant Street isn't big enough, but that there's capacity in the system. But for a distance, you'd have to, you know, create a new, you know, upgrade some of the sewer infrastructure. You know, it's a cost but not a barrier and so, you know, or, you know, doesn't preclude development, so. You know, the answers were, sure, yes, that's, that's all, it can all be done. Um, you know, traffic's been acknowledged, you know, I think the idea was to try to create more multimodal options with another bike. Path or multi-use path and, you know, manage traffic that way, and so. You know, I think if we, you know, it sounds like we'd wanna continue moving this forward, I think some of it then becomes, do we like the idea of. What we have for density or is it something different, you know, what are we, kind of what is the purpose and target? And then how do we, you know, how could we manage some of these potential impacts or some of these ideas, so we do have to, you know. I think traffic is really important, um, you know, I don't think that it's realistic to say we'll get a new entrance onto one sixteen easily. Maybe it would come, but not, you know, I think if this were in place, a development would occur before that, so, you know, is it limiting parking, is it doing something else? Um, but yeah, nothing was, you know, nothing was saying like, you know, it wasn't like. We don't have enough water or, you know, we can't handle it with our wastewater treatment, it was all like, it can be managed, and so, you know, it's. You know, if this becomes a little bit, you know, if this keeps moving forward and we get more refined, you know, I'd, I'd go back to all those different, you know, interests, I think, you know, our fire department. Is pretty well equipped, so, you know, we're not proposing, you know, high-rise buildings or things that wouldn't work, and so we'd still have, you know, they still have to meet. You know, fire, you know, what the fire department will want, so I don't think we've envisioned a density that would. Make it difficult for, you know, emergency services. You know, I could be wrong, but maybe, you know, that's something we could, you know, they have to meet anyways, but we could write it in, into, you know, some provisions if we move this forward.
Nate, one question I had about sewer in particular was. If a developer shows up and says, hey, your zoning would allow me to build five thousand beds. And your sewer line doesn't, isn't big enough, is it something that the town would build? Or would this developer be required to upgrade the town sewer? Or does it, is that just a negotiation on a project-by-project basis?
Yeah, to me, it's more of a negotiation, I don't think we can require a developer. To, to do it, but I think, you know, it, it becomes a, a discussion and negotiation.
Okay. All right, Angus and then Bruce and Jesse?
Yeah, I just have three quick questions, um. One is um, maybe a clarification, um, or asking for clarification. I've, I've heard a lot of people in town say that they are concerned about sewer and water. And, and, but, um, some of those people have also called for more housing on UMass's property. Um, and I'm just trying to understand, does UMass pay the town of Amherst for um, water and sewage?
Yeah, so it's, it's the same infrastructure, so, you know, if, you know, they use the town water supplies and they use the town wastewater system, so. You know, it. They, and they, they pay, they pay, you know, they're, they're a user, right, but.
Okay.
So for instance, if there really was a concern like, wow, we're gonna drain our reservoirs, it doesn't matter if it's housing off campus or on campus, it uses the same drinking water supply.
Okay, thank you, um, and then the, the second question I had was about parking. For the University Drive overlay, we have different parking requirements, right? So we, we could feasibly, I mean, like, I was looking at, um, you know, the, like, the Puffton Village currently has tons of parking. Um, I mean, clearly, every unit can have multiple parking uh, spaces, but the building that just got approved um, in the, in University Drive. Did, was not, was I think, what, one parking space per unit, um, and, and a lot of the units were two or three bedroom, so. Um, so no, I just wanted to flag, I think there's, there's ways to actually, we would be increasing the density but trying to perhaps even reduce the parking. Um, and that's the whole point of that location because it's within easy walking distance of UMass. Um, and that's the whole point of that location because it's within easy walking distance of UMass. Um, so I just wanted to flag that. And then I had one other thing, oh gosh, that I was going to ask about, oh, about the event. The, the, um, people related to some of the ownership of these apartments, current apartments, uh, came, did they say anything at the event?
Yes, they did.
What? If y'all remember.
No, I do. I, okay, I, can I talk?
Uh, they didn't, they didn't identify themselves as the owners of, you know, Puffton or Brandywine or whatever. So I don't know which ones were which ones.
So I know who's who, or at least I don't know everybody who was who. But Barbara Puffer was there, she didn't say anything. Uh, one of the other, uh, ownership owners did. Uh, I think that was the person who was, for example, asking about, uh, or questioning the wisdom of distributing, uh, uh, um, the affordable inclusionary zoning units in, in and around. And we had a bit of a conversation about that. Uh, he felt that had, what I would characterize as the, as a somewhat old-fashioned view, that, uh, it's proper and so forth not to ghettoize. That was my word, not anybody else's. Um, uh, we didn't typically argue or respond, which is why I let that outrageous comment about traffic back up in Pine Street float. Because Doug was very clear at the beginning that this was a listening session. So we, we answered questions, particularly questions of clarification, where people didn't understand something that we were saying. We wanted to have, we wanted to make sure people understood. So clearly we were answering those kinds of questions, but we weren't speaking to the things like the sewer capabilities and the traffics and so forth. Um, but I could have, I mean, uh, the, the, the sewer line, for example, that runs in, out in that direction is, uh, a candidate to receive flows from, uh, a sewer extension into Leverett to support the Kittredge property, which would be of similar scale potentially, or comparable anyway. Um, so there are, uh, various forces that are going to be driving the increase or the loading on the infrastructure. And if we are publicly talking about a deficit of, um, is it nine hundred homes or nine hundred dwelling units in town? Um, uh, clearly, we are committed to trying to, uh, or is it nine thousand? No, it's not nine thousand, it must be nine hundred. Um, we, we're already talking about, uh, expanding the housing, uh, capacity or the housing availability in town. So the, the, this, the, these, the, these, the traffic, the water, the sewer has to, um, has to keep up. I mean, uh, that's, I, so I agree with Doug's statement that of earlier, that we said that that's not really our concern so much, it's not our primary concern. So I, I, I think that we, we should be mindful of this. And there probably are places in town where it would be easier to build housing from a sewer and services point of view than others. Maybe we should know where those areas are, even if we don't follow that knowledge because there were too many other contrary reasons why we wouldn't do it, where it's easy to add to the sewer. Um, Fred, I was interested in your comments about the North Amherst intersection and the lights, because I've been watching that happen. I'm also, um, interested in your statement that you said that if we rebuild that intersection, we will solve a lot of traffic problems. When you say rebuild, uh, do you mean a different traffic light system? Or are you talking about the roundabout type of rebuilding, some reconfiguring of the actual traffic flow?
This is, this is twenty years ago, uh, twenty-five, almost twenty-five years ago. Um, and I, I kind of want to take another look at it, but, um.
Oh, okay. Actually, let me interrupt you because th- those traffic lights were reconfigured about three years ago. So I, I thought you were part of that, but you're clearly talking about something else.
No, the, what I was talking about involved a substantial, yes, it involved, uh, reworking the traffic lights, but it was in that, the context involved, uh, reconstructing that intersection in, in significant ways. And the details escaped me at this point, but I, I have seen the engineered plan and it's, it, it's very significant. And, um, there's only so much you can do with the traffic signals themselves. And, uh, there was, there was a fair amount of asphalt involved and as well as the, uh, reconfigured traffic lights. Uh, I'm, I'm sure that Guilford would have a, a quick answer to that.
Well, I think he would, that's the problem. The, there is a discussion that's been going for a couple of years now or more about, uh, configuring a roundabout in that town, uh, in that intersection. And I think if we were to have resistance to an overlay in North Amherst, we would find that the resistance to a roundabout would be tenfold greater than what we might encounter if we were trying to propose an overlay rezoning.
As, as best I recall, uh, I, I may regret this statement, but I don't think it was a roundabout. I'm aware of that concern, Bruce.
Good.
Um, there was, well, I think, I, I think I will, um, I'll, I'll contact Guilford, I think he'll talk to me.
Okay, um, Angus, you were, you were, you were asking two or three, you had two or three comments. Did you have anything else to say? I think Bruce was initially was responding to you.
Yeah, just asking about the Puffton, um, if, if any, you know, what people who own any of the apartment complexes, if we learned anything new from them.
No, uh, we didn't learn, uh, or Jesse's got a, a comment, so maybe I'll let, I'll defer to Jesse.
So Bruce and Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the dark-eyed gentleman was also got really fixated on the cost of doing such a thing of the redevelopment. And I think I learned after the fact that he was involved, he was a manager or part-owner or something at Puffton also. But he many times came back to this idea that it just didn't seem worth it to him.
Yeah, I think it had to do with the cost, you know, interrupt.
So, but that's an N of one, but that is a response to your question, Angus.
I wonder if that was Steve, uh, Steve Walczek. I, I've talked to Steve many times. Um, but I've never actually met him. I, he, he's been, he's made on two or three occasions five thousand dollar contributions to the North Amherst Community Farm. And I always tried to hand-deliver my thank you note, but he was always out. But if that was Steve, I should find out. Um, we should bear in mind that Steve has got a, 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 a terrific, uh, practical understanding of how to manage the property that's there at the moment. Uh, and his senses, as, as reported, uh, that it's, uh, um, it's at its capacity. So, uh, so the, 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 the management structure and mechanisms and resources and so forth that Steve brings to bear on managing Puffton Village are adequate for Puffton, but would not be adequate for a two or three-fold increase in density. And, and I've been quite prepared to hear from the Puffton management repeatedly the truth, uh, that. But I think we should recognize that if you, uh, you know, if you build a, uh, a Ferrari, uh, that's probably, let's just say, uh, some higher-end vehicle, uh, that can go faster, you need to have the brakes designed to manage the, uh, capacity of the new, uh, improved, uh, device. And so I think is, uh, the analogy would be for, if we were to increase the scale and density of something, we would expect that we would have a, a capa- a capable, uh, and commensurate management plan. And I don't think the limitations of the previ- of the current situation necessarily, um, uh, speak to what's possible in a biggerized situation. But I certainly think we would need to learn from what this, uh, gentleman, what this, uh, development has to, uh, teach us.
All right, thanks, Bruce. Jesse, you still have your hand up.
On a, on a related note to what Bruce just said and Angus, like you asked before also, or, or brought up, I did bring up the idea of limiting parking spaces to try and mitigate a little bit. And it was the one moment where I felt like I was almost booed out of the room, because the response was, don't be ridiculous, every student has a car. And, like, whatever, it's opinions. Uh, I will agree, something else someone said there, that I witnessed and had the same thoughts with the new construction in town that does not have parking. Seems like the response by the town was to allow more permit parking or at least not pay attention to where all kinds of parking happens in my neighborhood currently. So I do think there needs to be attention to it. Uh, side note, I'm also surprised the town doesn't want to make a lot more money by ticketing more aggressively, but that's a different topic altogether.
Okay, Nate? So it sounds like, you know, the North Amherst idea can move forward. You know, I do think, you know, Jerry, you had brought up kind of what's, you know, politically feasible. You know, as an overlay with housing, it might only need a majority vote of council, I think, you know, but we can be aware of that. You know, as this keep, you know, if we keep discussing it. Um, you know, like I said before, it's an opportunity, you know, we've talked to other property owners and they kind of said the same thing about, you know, their multi-unit property owners, that they're comfortable where they are and they don't, it's a, it's a big hurdle to, you know, have this, to do a redevelopment in terms of financing and loss of income. And so that's where, you know, we had three times the density, that's when we did the Conference of Housing Market Study, the consultant said, for someone to undertake this, you have to offer a lot more to make it worth, you know, that loss of income or the, the kind of complexity of doing the project. So, but you know, I mean, it's not a magic number or ratio, it could be different. Um, and maybe an outside developer that partners with the owner doesn't necessarily need to get that, achieve that three times the density because what the overlay could offer would be worthwhile anyways, um, you know, whatever the number is. And so, you know, it was, it was just an idea of, okay, what, you know, when we first mapped this out, I said, okay, well, it's like, you know, a dozen north squares could fit in the overlay, and that is rough, whatever it was, like, that's three times the density given, you know, the building footprint and size of North Square. And it worked, just, you know, kind of really generically. And so it seemed like, okay, this could be a place to have this density. I think all the considerations that, you know, were discussed probably last week and we've talked about in terms of traffic or site design and, you know, just kind of the livability of it, you know, what hadn't, you know, hasn't been considered. So, um, you know, Bruce did some kind of concept designs for a site. But that's not to say a developer would want to do the same thing. And so he had, you know, I think his, you know, nice space between buildings and parking. And, you know, I, I think if we want to keep, continue moving this forward, I think we would say, okay, well, what, what are the guidelines we'd want to have in place for this overlay? Um, you know, and does it, you know, do we limit parking? Do we, you know, what, you know, we've kind of talked about, what is the purpose? What kind of housing type do we want in terms of use classification? And, you know, what, what are, what are we really trying to emphasize here? Um, you know, and I do think, I think, I think in the map that planning board identified other areas that could have a similar overlay, like Olympia Drive, the first, the idea, you know, a number of decades ago was that could be where Greek Life was located and it could have higher density. And there's been a few, you know, private developments there. The university owns some land. And maybe there is a way to get the zoning change to allow it there too. And maybe somewhere else, somewhere else, right? We've talked about north of Fearing or revisiting areas to say, okay, here's some areas where we'd have different kinds of density than, say, in other village centers. I don't think any, I think any idea that the board has or, you know, changes are, you know, it'll be a, a long conversation. I don't, you know, I think people might, I like the idea, uh, in theory and it makes sense, but I think then getting it right and getting it approved is something different. So, um, you know, I still think this North Amherst area, you know, is a good area. I think their staff and others and, you know, council members and probably a lot of the public are like, wow, they, they have a lot of questions about it. And so I'm not sure, you know, I'd like to try to talk about next steps and say, okay, do we just continue working on putting, you know, the framework together? And trying to really scope out what it means, like what, what, you know, what is the right density? And what are some of the parameters and guidelines of this overlay?
I mean, I guess I can say, from what I heard last week, I don't see that we need to substantially change course. Um, we need to be thoughtful and, and, you know, as, as inclusive as we can be and and then, uh, you know, put it, put it forward. I mean, take a shot at this area and then move on to some other areas, if it, regardless of whether it flies or not. Uh, Bruce, or rather Jesse, and then Bruce.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I agree with Doug. No reason not to progress, uh, and try and move it to council, if that's where we go next. I do think, unlike University Drive, we, we might want to craft a narrative addressing some of these other concerns, which we didn't really do for the other one, because I think it was very different people and issues around University Drive. I'm of course happy to work on that. Um, I also, I meant to say earlier, that's a little bit, I mean, maybe just because you weren't there at the meeting, Nate, because you could have commented on the infrastructure piece. That, yeah, you were told it would be fine. So, which includes stuff like that as much as we can.
All right, Bruce?
I think, uh, I'm, I'm, I, I had some comments prepared for this discussion. They may be better, uh, directed or developed in the, uh, in our subcommittee, I'm not sure. But, uh, for example, I think, uh, I would like us to look, uh, a little closer at the, uh, how the, um, the overlay, the demarcation line runs through the properties of the houses on, uh, the big houses on North, uh, Pleasant Street. Um, I, I, I just, I just want to, uh, make sure that we've thought about that and, and how they affect those houses and what we think is going to happen or could happen and so forth. So I think there's a, there's a little bit of, um, scenario thinking, uh, related to that particular edge. Otherwise, I think the, 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 the delineation is, is, is good. Um, I also think that we should think about, um, require, how we can, uh, how and whether we should or could require the affordable housing, uh, fraction under Article fifteen to be, um, uh, to, to have, uh, street addresses or something like that. But in other words, to drive that particular fraction of the housing quite differently from the rest, which we assume will be predominantly students and so forth. So I, I think it would be appropriate for us to think about generally two different types of, uh, um, uh, resident, residential clientele in, in, in this, uh, space. Uh, I've got a few thoughts on that, which I won't, uh, add right now. But I think that that, those two topics would be, uh, appropriate. And I think, uh, um, I think the, 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 uh, that, that, that we should give some more thought to the traffic and, and this multi-use path. Um, I, for example, I wonder whether it's a good idea to make it not a multi-use path, but a, a, a dual-use path. I mean, a dual-carriageway path, one for cyclists and one for pedestrians, and to separate them in some agreeable way. Um, and, uh, and think about how that, how we can encourage that to, um, perhaps take the route that, uh, a large fraction of the people in that meeting on, uh, last Wednesday felt that, well, we've already tried that and there's wetlands there and you can't do it. And, uh, so I think we've known that, but I don't think that we, just because somebody tried it once before under circumstances that we don't know a- anything much about, um, whether what may have been concluded, uh, X number of years ago is still, um, will drive the bus today. So those are some of the things that I think that we can refine the, um, the general framework document. Um, uh, we can add to Nate's general framework document, I think, expand some of the items and add a couple more related to those topics and one or two others that I have in mind.
Well, should we refer this to the Housing and Zoning Subcommittee to, you know, I, I mean, the, the Nate's June eighteenth uh, draft was in the packet, and I assume that's the basis for. draft was in the packet and I assume that's the basis for what we would do next. I mean, at the moment, it feels, you know, I don't know, it's quarter of nine. I'm not sure we're going to get too far into the details tonight. I mean, it seems like the main outcome of this evening's conversation is that, yeah, we want to keep moving forward and we can do that either in the Subcommittee or we could do it in one of our meetings sometime in the future. And I, am I right? The June 18th draft is pretty much the most recent articulation of what this might be?
Yeah, there was a framework document that's more recent and then there was actual, you know, text of what, you know, trying to get out to be, you know, language of the zoning amendment and that hasn't been updated in a while. To kind of step back and kind of did the framework document. So, Yep.
All right.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I, I mean, I think even for the zoning priorities list, you know, it was nice to have a conversation and you know, now we can work on some of those and bring things back to the board and the Subcommittee. Yeah. And I, you know, I don't want to, you know, I think for North Amherst, I like the idea of, yeah, but, you know, could we set a timeframe and say, you know, so many months from now, we, you know, and work, you know, we want to have a draft by law and we work backwards and really try to keep momentum. You know, and if it doesn't work, then we, right, we have other ideas. I just, you know, we spent a long time on University Drive. I'm glad it, it worked out. I, you know, maybe we try to keep the pace, you know, keep pace on this one.
Okay, Jesse?
Yeah, just quickly, just a general comment for all of us to think about, because something that came up repeatedly at the meeting also was about, was expressed as this idea that we're going to change, we're going to put in the overlay and it's all going to happen overnight. And I think whenever possible in our conversations, we need to make it really clear, we're just allowing the possibility. And now we can even point to University Drive and say, yeah, look, nothing really happened yet. But anyway, it was, it just surprised me and it was a lesson for myself to like, add that into the communication, including wherever this goes next.
Yep. And just allowing more possibilities.
That's all. Thanks.
All right. So maybe that's, that's good enough for the housing discussion this evening. If unless anybody objects, we'll go on to the rest of our agenda. Time now is eight forty-six. Pam, any old business or Nate not reasonably anticipated?
I say no, Nate?
Uh, yeah, I agree. I don't have any.
All right. What about new business?
Not for tonight.
Not for tonight. Okay. For May A and R subdivision applications, excuse me.
No.
There are upcoming, there is the, I think it's the third time around where it's the preliminary subdivision for Shootsbury Road where the solar project had been proposed. And so it's the same preliminary subdivision plan the board has seen twice before is, it is expired. So the owner has resubmitted that and that'll be heard in December.
Okay, all right. ZBA applications, anything we should be, we might be interested in?
No, I mean, like that solar project, if they, you know, if they submit, that can come back, you know, the planning board had looked at it and so you could, you could look at it again, but I think that's a ways away.
Okay, all right. SPP, SPR, SUV applications? On the horizon?
There's, you know, there's one or two that, you know, there's one scheduled for a hearing in early December as well. It's, it's, I think, you know, and there's, and then there's a, a few projects going through the Conservation Commission that if they get through would be you know, a site planner view with the boards down in East Amherst. Amir Mikchi, you know, there's the new building, 133, 143 South East Street is behind the bank building. The property owner owns across the street and is going through Conservation Commission now to build, you know, a mixed use building with, you know, some parking there. It'd be a new, new three to four story building. And if it, you know, depending on the Conservation Commission review, then they followed up with a site planner review to the planning board. So that, you know, that'll be a bigger project that may come forward in the next month or two.
All right. All right, we're up to Committee and Liaison Reports. Bruce, anything for PVPC?
No, nothing. Thank you.
Jesse, anything on Housing Subcommittee?
No, we could not meet last week largely because of my jury duty. I did want to ask the members and Nate if we could stay on for five minutes after this to try and reschedule the next one quickly, just while we're all here.
All right, Angus, CPAC?
Yes, we have our first meeting tomorrow. Very exciting. I, so I, I, I don't really know how this normally works. We have gotten the sixteen applications for CPA funding. And we asked a bunch of questions as a committee of all the applicants. We just got back their responses today. So, my job tomorrow, tonight and tomorrow will be reading their answers to our questions. There's a lot of really exciting things I can tell you all sixteen if that's, if that would help. Or I cannot. It kind of depends on what you all would like. There, I do have a question for the group and I think I'll have more questions once we've actually had our first meeting and started to kind of think about priorities. But what would the group prefer?
Bruce, your hand went up first.
Curious, Angus, of the sixteen, how many of them is the applicant essentially an instrument of the town? And I'd include the library in that as opposed to, shall we say, unaffiliated local nonprofits who would like to get some funds to do some local initiative that they feel pleased and what's the, what's the fraction? Can you, do you have that in your head?
I don't have the exact number, but the, I would say the vast majority of them are town, come from the town in different guises. Or from things like the housing trust, which is
Yeah, I'd say that. I'm part of the review. I think at least 10 of them are from the town.
Yeah. And I think the majority of the funding that's being requested, the vast majority because of the, the town hall and Jones Library are big chunks of money.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, there's a, a group of staff that helps with the CPA and I'm one of them. And so, yeah, this is actually, you know, this year there's over $6 million in requests and sixteen proposals. So it's pretty, it's, it's really competitive. And typically there's a one and a half million dollars available, give or take a bit. And then there's debt service. So, this is probably, you know, one of the first years where the CPA committee, you know, really has to make some decisions about what, what to fund. Because it really is, you know, the, you know, there's the, there's borrowing ability, but really are we going to borrow with the CPA committee recommend borrowing $5 million or, you know, there might be some projects that aren't funded. And so this is usually the CPA committee tries to fund and honor a lot of the requests. I think this year is a difficult one in terms of, you know, some might not be recommended at all to council. So, you know, the CPA committee's role is to recommend, to determine products are eligible and then make recommendations to town council for, for a vote and then it moves forward that way. So, yeah, Angus, if you have questions of staff, you could ask me or, you know, Leah. And then if the planning board wants to hear more, the CPA committee webpage is usually updated. It isn't yet. But usually all the proposals and meeting packets will get up there. So if the board is interested, you could find them on the CPA committee webpage.
All right, great.
Well, one question that I do have for the board that, that might help me kind of think about what we think are priorities. There are two different requests for funding that have to do with affordable housing. One is for a specific property on Amity Street. I think just down the street from, from Joan, the Jones Library. It's a house that's currently, I think it, it maybe is three units, two or three units. And there's a plan to basically turn that house into three units and then build an ADU of some kind or another dwelling next to it that would also house several units. They'd all be affordable. And it's kind of time sensitive because the seller is wanting to sell it substantially below market rates to the the Amherst Community Land Trust. So that's, that's one project. The other project is from the Affordable Housing Trust. And it's kind of a, a big chunk of money that they're, they're putting towards kind of, you know, development equity to housing ecosystem innovation. And then kind of a rapid response fund. So I guess one question is, you know, is, is a targeted investment that will yield several units? You know, a better use of, and, and they're pretty comparable in, in their requests. Is that a better use of funds than something that would just be kind of putting money into the Affordable Housing Trust that they could use for a variety of purposes? So I'd love to hear if anyone has any thoughts on, on that.
Anyone? Bruce, then Jared?
I, I'm just going to say I'm not going to comment because I'm associated with the, the 174 Amity project. So just for the record, I, I won't be saying anything about that in this forum, no matter what we're doing.
Hey, Jared?
I love affordable housing trusts. I love how flexible their financing options can be. All that being said, if there's a project in the pipeline, then take the bird in the hand, not the tune in the bush.
Yeah.
All right. I don't see any other hands, Angus. You're going to have to figure it out on your own.
Okay. I think the only other thing that I would, that I would just ask the group is that the Jones request is pretty substantial. It's for $1.3 million. The town's roof request is for a million dollars. So I think the, the other question that I might have for the group is thinking about those two. And Nate, correct me if I'm wrong, those are the two biggest requests, correct? Thinking about those two, which would, either one would kind of eat up almost all of the funds available. Does the planning board have any kind of thoughts on priorities?
I mean, neither of those feel like planning types of projects. You know, to, I mean, to some, to some degree, I feel like you're just asking our personal opinion because we're all together.
Well, as the representative of the planning board, I kind of, it, it's helpful to hear the like, the planning board doesn't think that any of these things are, that, that those two things are relevant to our, our purview. That's a helpful thing that I can, you know, transmit to the CPA.
My opinion, I don't know. I, I did see a hand for a moment that came up and then dropped, so.
It's too personal.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Angus, it's a good question to ask. I mean, even over the CPA committee too, because I know there's a request for the pool building at War Memorial and then pickleball courts and, you know, there's just a lot of big requests. And so, you know, usually the CPA committee asks if there's other funding, you know, is it leveraging other funding?
Right.
All those things. Yeah, I don't, I think there, I think it's a, it's a difficult thing. I think most of the products are eligible, you know, they fall into one of the categories of CPA, you know, it's historic preservation, recreation, open space or community housing. You know, is it the highest priority for this year or could it be, you know, funded in phases? You know, those are all interesting questions.
Yeah. That's all that I've got. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Angus. Nate, any word on DRB?
Yeah, Karen and I have been emailing. She, you know, she said if someone wanted to take over, she wouldn't be opposed. At one point she said she likes doing it, but I think, you know, sometimes she said they've only been looking at a lot of signs. And so, you know, Vera Cruzana is moving its location downtown. And they looked at a sign there and they looked at another sign for a restaurant. And that, that was it. So there hasn't been any, you know, they haven't looked at anything beyond really just kind of, you know, like she said, mostly signs and a little changes to facade treatments, but not, nothing substantial. So.
Okay. All right. Well, I haven't seen or heard of anyone on the board who's eager to, to take her place.
Once we solve all the housing problems, I will.
Oh, good, good. So that'll be sometime next year, Jesse.
Well, Bruce mentioned the, the Kittredge Estate housing project. That, that's, that'll solve all the problems.
Right. Oh, and that'll be an easy sell in, in Lovren at Amherst. So I think we're done with those Committee and Liaison Reports. It's eight fifty-nine. Report of Chair, I have one thing I was going to just say to you guys. And that is I wanted to recommend to you a, an article on housing development in Amherst that, that appeared in the Amherst Current yesterday. It's written by someone named Evan Naismith and frequently there are articles in both the Current and the, and the Amherst Indy. And this, this would seem like a particularly good one. So you might want to check that out.
Comments sometimes.
Is?
Yeah.
Is that the one about we have possibly going back for another look at form-based development?
No, not, not really. It's not really focused on form-based. It's, it's really more just about housing and how it, it, well, I, I'll stop there.
All right, there is a, I, I haven't
It appeared yesterday.
Really look at it, but there is another article about looking at and possibly the article advocates going, taking a serious look at form-based development.
And that was in the Current or the?
Well, it, it was in some Amherst widely circulated. My wife told me she had seen it. So I haven't had a chance to read it yet, but I just wanted to put that out there. I thought maybe this was it, but I guess it's something else. But that, that's also out there in a very recent past.
Okay, all right. That's all I had for Report of Chair, Report of Staff. Nate?
Yeah, I have a few things, you know, if you haven't heard, the town manager appointed a new planning and economic development director. So Jeff Bag, he had worked for the town. I left in 2016. He'll be coming back in December. So he'll be the new director. You know, that, you know, there could be some changes there in terms of, you know, what's happening with the board and, you know, other directions. So we can just wait and stay tuned. A few other things, form-based code, you know, Burlington, Vermont is looking at actually doing the, it's going for a vote in their, in Burlington, Vermont, a pretty comprehensive rezone using form-based code. So that's, there's a pretty thick PDF that you can find online, but it's, it's really nice. You know, the downtown design standards, I don't want to say it's form-based code, but the working group's been meeting more frequently. And I think the idea is that there'll be draft design standards available, you know, for review later this month. And the, the hope would be that then the consultants will come to the planning board and other boards and committees and seek input, you know, in the next three to four months. And so, you know, I think we'll work with the board. It'll be at one of the regular meetings, but there'll be, you know, there's a, it's, it's a pretty big document. There's a few kind of different documents, but we'd want to give the planning board enough time to look at it and make comments. And so, you know, right now it's considered design standards. I, it gets into zoning as well. And so, you know, when it come, when it's available, you know, feel free to provide, you know, as many comments as you'd like to the consultants and staff. And so, you know, we'll, we'll try to get that, you know, have it, you know, I think the idea is to try to get to the, the board to look at it twice. You know, a one, one, once, and then if there's, you know, a new iteration and refinements to look at it again. So I think that could happen in the next four months. Oh, the other one is, hasn't happened yet, but similar to ADUs, you know, the state has come up with new regulations regarding, you know, clean energy citing, so, and, and battery, battery energy storage. And so, next, in March of 26, there'll be regulations and then next, um, in March of twenty-six, there'll be regulations and then it, it'll be effective next spring in terms of how communities can permit, um, you know, certain clean energy. So solar, wind and hydro. Um, probably solar is most appropriate or relevant to Amherst. Um, the difference, you know, the one big one will be that, um, all permits from land use permits to building permit and electrical permits all have to be, wetlands have to be issued within a twelve-month period. And so there's a lot of upfront work that an applicant will need to do and, you know, we'll have to establish new zoning on other regulations. So there was a, a solar bylaw working its way through CRC and staff. And so the Director of Sustainability for the town is working with CRC on that. Um, you know, at some point it'll get to the planning board. It'll, you know, it'll probably be a little bit, but, you know, that'll be something that'll be a a zoning amendment that'll be, um, coming forward in the spring that the board will need to look at. And so, uh, it, there's a lot happening at the state with that. I think locally, um, there's a, there's still a lot of questions about what that means. The size of the array is really small for solar, uh, in terms of kilowatt out, what it, what it produces. So, you know, almost any array now would have to come under this review, um, kind of, I don't want to say expedited permitting. Uh, but anyways, you know, as, as it becomes, you know, as there's more workshops and more information I'll share with the planning board, I think, I'm kind of waiting for it to, you know, it's, it's still in the comment period. So, uh, I know local officials, I think maybe the board may have received a comment through the online form about it. Um, and so, you know, I'd say give it a month or two and then we could talk about it again. Hopefully there's some, you know, some new, you know, iterations from the state level. But that'll be something we will have to pick up in this.
Got it, it from staff?
That's it.
All right. Brad, you had your hand up. Is it, was that a legacy?
Uh, well, yeah, I, um, I was thinking that it might apply, and it, it might, the, it might influence, I'll put it that way, uh, what's going on in Schutzeberry Road. And it, well, literally because the way they're handling it, the zoning is frozen on it, but, um, it, it nevertheless, I suspect will, um, have some influence, uh, even if it doesn't directly affect it.
Okay, all right, uh, Angus.
So Nate, will you still be joining us in December or will you have your Wednesday nights?
No, I, I think the idea is that I'd still be the staff liaison to the planning board, so.
Got it.
Yep, yeah, the director may come once in a while, may come with, you know, different ideas and proposals. So, um, I think the idea is that they would not be, you know, a direct liaison to the board, but as needed.
All right. I see no more hands. The time is nine oh six. I guess we are adjourned. Our next meeting is November nineteenth?
Right, and so on the nineteenth, it's, you know, three zoning amendment hearings, right? The two citizen petitions and then the neighborhood business map change. And so, you know, we might have, you know, housing discussion if we get to it, but, you know, as public hearings, there might be a lot of comments for the zoning petitions and you know, I think we can just allow that evening to unfold and, um, you know, I don't, I don't know, you know, how, how, how much of a discussion will be on each amendment, but it could be a fair amount.
So we'll just open those three hearings and continue them most likely.
But I, I think the hope would be that the BN could be wrapped up and referred back if it's, if, if the board thinks it's stra- as straightforward as, you know, it seems, uh, maybe the citizen petitions. You know, there's a few different, you know, there's many different options, but if we think that those, you know, they could be continued or wrapped up or recommended. But yeah, I, I think, um, it really depends on how the board, you know, what you think at the hearings, but
Okay.
We're not putting anything else on the agenda that evening, I think, just because it could be, you know, two or three hours of discussion.
Yep. All right, Bruce.
Nate, on those citizen petitions, uh, um, do I imagine or understand correctly therefore that the citizen who's presenting, who's drafted this would be presenting and arguing and answering the questions much like Pat and Mandy Joe did, uh, some years ago?
Yeah, I let the proponent, yeah, let the proponent know they can make a presentation and also bring, you know, additional persons if they want. So it could be a team approach where, you know, they have, you know, there's two or three people here to present those citizen petitions and help answer questions.
Okay.
All right, and then Jesse, I know, wanted to convene with the
The Subcommittee, please.
Schedule your next event.
Yes, thank you.
So, okay, so time is nine oh eight. I am, uh, going to say that we, as a planning board, are adjourned. So our meeting is ending. And I'm going to sign off and, uh, Pam, you and I are both hosts.
I'm, I will stay here. What I'm going to do is I'm going to stop the recording.
Sure, yeah, it'll be quick, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, good night, everyone. I'll see you two weeks.
So, we are scheduled to meet Thursday.